Security in our communities and to enlist the public in the fight to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to ensure nobody has to make an impossible choice between food and other necessities like medicine, utilities, or childcare. And now therefore, I am McCarthy right on behalf of the city council do hereby recognize September 2023 as Hunger Action Month in our city of Twenty-Nine Palms, California. And I call this observance to the attention of our citizens dated this 12th day of September 2023. And since it's to the citizens, I'm gonna present this one to my boy Scott.
All right, man. We need all y'all.
That's why we're wearing orange also. They told me I had on orange, so I was good. Council comments and reports of meetings attended. Councilmember Scott.
I just had a lot of meetings with some constituents. I went to Long Beach for some training in terms of elections and things like that. And so that was pretty fun. But outside of that, nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, I had a Mojave Desert air quality meeting. They closed out the exchange program for gas-powered items for electric at a start again in April 2024. When it comes out again, I'll make sure everyone knows. And this year, they gave out 1,300 units was the most they've ever exchanged. So the program is getting bigger, and they're hoping to do even more. They're getting a little more grant money for this, so they're trying to expand it even to more items. So we'll see what happens. I'll keep everybody informed in April. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clink.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody celebrating a birthday in the month of September, a happy birthday, especially to everyone here in Twenty-Nine Palms. I attended the San Bernardino County Transit Authority meeting, and we discussed resolutions of necessities for the Interstate 10 Mount Vernon Avenue interchange project. Properties have been given a fair market value amount for their properties, and we just have to wait for them to accept it. This here area is where trucks run a lot, and they're making the roads wider for them to make the curve to turn there. We also talked about the call box maintenance. There is only one company in the state of California that does it, and it's Nightscope We voted, it's a $3.78 million three-year term from October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2026. We also approved $3.6 million for the Mount Vernon Viaduct. The West Valley commuter Phase 1 bus rapid transit, $119 million. And then something that's very interesting and maybe hopefully could come out to Twenty-Nine Palms is called the Emergency Communication Nurse System. If you called 911 and they didn't think that it was an emergency, that you needed to get an ambulance to your, to there to take you and take you to the, to the hospital, they would actually get you an Uber or some other transportation to take you up there. And this is if you don't have transportation, of course, and take you to the hospital instead of making ambulances come there when the ambulances could be at a major car accident with a lot of people hurt. So it's something that I'm gonna try and talk to maybe former Mayor O'Gildie. Maybe they can come up with something for that. And just welcome Shane. Look forward to working with you and good luck in your new job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor. I had not many official meetings, but I had many meetings with some concerned citizens. I just want to wish my son happy birthday this month. He's making me older. He's 23 now, so that's probably why I have a lot of this, but that's all I got.
Thank you. So I want to start by wishing my wife a happy anniversary, 38 years. And then also my son, happy birthday, my third son. He was born on our anniversary. And I did attend, I was the emcee for the Basin Y Foundation dinner that they had, and I had a blast. I had a great time giving out all those awards and things like that. So that was a lot of fun. They did it at the Helen Gray Center in Joshua Tree. And I also attended the tag grant meeting with the Basin Transit. That's the, you know, grant program that Basin Transit does to give, you know, quite a bit of money to different organizations that are working in our communities and things like that. So we, we, we're, it's gonna be presented to the Basin Board, but looking like about $80,000 worth of grants given out. So that's a great thing. And then also, we started our season for Warhawks football. We, we lost, but it was still, you know, good we started, so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask if this is okay to do is to ask for a moment of silence for all the people that lost their lives on September 11, 2001?
Yes, absolutely.
And all the ones that did not lose their lives that are still coping with the tragedy.
Okay, so we're gonna observe a moment of silence for September 11 for all the victims and, and then those things, so moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately by the city council. The public will be given an opportunity to comment, comment on consent calendar items prior to the city council action. Does anybody wish to pull a consent calendar item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull consent item number eight, please.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, open up to the public. Anybody got comments? Bring it back. Looking for a motion for all except number eight.
I'll move except consent calendar except for number eight.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Mintz.
Aye.
Councilmember Clink.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Beldering.
Aye.
Mayor Wright.
Aye.
Approved 5-0.
Okay, number eight. Staff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item, the recommendation from staff is to accept the work completed by KNC Construction as part of the Development Department Tenant Improvement Project for a total cost of $162,672.60. Direct the city clerk to file the notice of completion for the contract work. Then finally is direct the finance director to release the retained funds 30 days after the notice of completion has been filed, providing no claims as filed against the contractor. Just by way of a little background, right on the other side of the, this wall here to the west was our Community Development Office. You know, through, gosh, there's probably 10-plus people in that area, very small space. It was exacerbated by, at that time, COVID, realizing that the space was too small. The city owns the building, you know, next to City Hall here on Civic Center Drive that was formerly housed by our finance department and a local dentist. Upon the local dentist's retirement, we kind of relooked at that building and repurposed it for moving the Community Development Department over to there. The construction is complete, which is why the, this recommendation is brought forward.
Thank you. Chris.
Thank you for that. You know, I just wanna, you know, I want to appreciate and thank the staff for their dedicated work and, and completing that project. I had the opportunity to tour the, the building yesterday, and I saw it before, and I saw it after, and so job well done. Thank you, sir.
And city manager, this, this project came in under budget.
Correct, yeah. We originally had a $250,000 budget for this, and it came in $162,672.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll move item eight. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clink.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Mintz.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Beldering.
Aye.
Mayor Wright.
Aye.
Approved 5-0.
Okay, public hearing. Transportation impact fee.
Yeah, before I turn to this, over to Community Development Director Gardner, just want to give a brief, brief background to this. Several years ago, the council and probably the many complaints through the years that the council has received with the curb gutter and sidewalk fee, gave direction to staff to kind of look at a better mechanism to accumulate funds for transportation. The curb gutter and sidewalk fee was $77 per linear foot. And, you know, probably the council has heard through the years, those who live in the outer lining areas of the city had to pay this fee, but the complaint was, I'm not gonna get any curb gutter and sidewalk. Although the policy was written, it can be regionally, it still wasn't, it just wasn't matching, you know, what the perception was from the community, hence why you receive complaints. So the staff embarked on looking at a better mechanism, which is a transportation impact fee, which is in front of you this evening, just to accept the study. There will be steps past this to implement the fee. First step is to accept the study. And with that, I'll turn it over to Community Development Director Gardner.
You basically said everything I was gonna say, so. I concur.
Questions for staff?
Well, and if the, the way development impact fees work is everything's charged by the square foot as opposed to the lot size of the frontage. And should this study be accepted tonight, we will come forward with the actual ordinances, with the actual fees, but this is before you assess the study.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
What was the total for it, were it now compared to what it might be?
Okay, so there's a maximum of $11,250 for, for residents. And it, and it's a little bit of, of apples and oranges, because now we're gonna be charging $2.94, $2.94 per square foot of, of billable space for a single-family residence. So you could have a small house that won't pay nearly that amount, for instance.
Yeah. And just to give you kind of an idea on that, you know, let's say a 2,000-square-foot house or a 15, let's say a 1,500-square-foot house, 1,500-square-foot house times, what is it, $2.94, that impact fee would be $4,400 compared to that, potentially that 11,250. So, so I think, we think of this as a win-win, because now it's more easily discernible because it's transportation. It's, it's the arterials that people use. So the premise of impact fees is development pays for development. So as a new resident comes into our community, builds a house, they've got to pay for their impact to the community, hence the word development impact fees. And the nexus is to transportation.
And one other quick note, this is how many, many, many other jurisdictions handle their development impact fees. So we're right in line with other jurisdictions.
So there's no refund?
Well, so, good question. Well, so, so staff, and a great question, because actually staff has kind of earmarked the amount from that date and time that the council gave, gave that direction to, which was approximately two years ago. So the delta, if you will, from that, depending on what size a house they built, between 11,250, 11,250 and the, you know, depending on the square footage, 4,400 or $5,000. In theory, if council directs us to, we can reimburse. We anticipated that, because I think originally that was what the discussion was, and it has taken us a couple of years to get to where we're at today.
You might be able to apply that to my bike path on the ski spring.
Yeah, you, you don't have to give the refunds from that point in time. And it can go to, that, that's part of what the curb gutter and sidewalk fee can go to is curb gutter, sidewalk, bike paths, you know, those transportation modals.
All right. Open up to the public. Got any green slips for this one? Bring it back. Looking for a motion.
And if you do want to add that refund amount to the recommendation, please do so.
Right now? I thought we still working on.
It's still gonna come back, yeah, because it's just accepting the fee study, but yeah, you could bring it back. I could bring it back later.
I'll make a motion to accept the transportation impact study.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Mintz.
Aye.
Councilmember Clink.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Beldering.
Aye.
Mayor Wright.
Aye.
Approved 5-0.
Okay, so let me make this announcement real quick. Due to technical difficulties, there's no live stream available at this time. We are recording audio, and that will be uploaded to you, or to YouTube later tonight. All right? So we apologize, but we're having technical difficulties. All right. Tourism Business Improvement District, T-Bid.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The recommendation in front of you this evening is hold the public hearing to adopt the resolution confirming the levy of assessments. Just by way of brief background, the T-Bid, the Tourism Business Improvement District, branded Visit 29, has an annual authorization process. Last meeting, the council adopted the Resolution of Intent to Levy at that time, which was adopted. Right thereafter, the, the city noticed this meeting today, along with sent a mailing to all the affected businesses. This meeting today is a procedural meeting. It's a protest vote. Just by way of, you know, giving some context to this, in fiscal year 22, the just ended, July, or I'm sorry, June 30, 2023, our fiscal year ended with, I'll give you the exact number here. Sorry. $2,345,671.70 of TOT revenue. How the protest hearing works is an affected business can formally, at this hearing, in advance, we didn't receive any protest hearing, protest notices from the city, to the city clerk, but that can be protested here at the public, on the public hearing. And just by way of example, just even math anyway, you know, how a weighted vote works is if we had a million dollars of TOT and you contributed $100,000, your vote would count as 10% by way of example. So our revenues that we brought in TOT this past year was $2,345,671. So those affected businesses, if they protest, they know what they contributed, so they can understand what their percentage is. It's proprietary information, so I can't say X hotel was 4.2% by way of example, because then you would know what their revenue is, and that's proprietary information. So, but I will tally that and report back of what the percentage is at the close of public hearing. So that concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, you said that letters went out to all of the stakeholders.
Correct.
Do we have copies, we have a copy of the letter? Or do we know what we sent out to the stakeholders? And thank you. And you said because it's proprietary information, we can't, we can't send that information out, and so you'll be tallying the, the results. Is there another way that these results could be tallied and still keep it confidential?
Well, I'll give the aggregate number, but just by way of example, if, again, using my million-dollar analogy, right? If you protested it and you contributed $100,000, you know you contributed $100,000, so you know your protest is 10%. So those who, who protested, I already gave the whole number, you know what your, your contribution is, so you know what your percentage is. All you gotta do is divide that by the total.
So I think what he's getting to is, is someone else gonna count with you.
Well, it'll be right here this evening. The finance director has given me the, the numbers, you know, of all the, the businesses, so I have that information in front of me. So I'm just gonna tally it by the individual. I could have the city clerk look at it, you know, with me as well, just to make sure for accuracy.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, open it up for the public. And not to curtail your comments or anything like that, but if you're gonna say the same thing somebody else is gonna say, it would be great if you would keep it short and say ditto or something like that, but of course, everyone is free to speak. So first I have Yashwin. I get it right? Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Yashwin. And the last city council meeting, I had heard Mr. Danny Mintz here mention that the Airbnbs do not have to be ADA compliant, because the current city policy makes sure that they're legal. So I just wanted to make something clear for myself as an Airbnb owner, you know, if I've taken all the classes, the human trafficking classes and all of that, and I start to get sued by someone for my ADA non-compliance, will the city back me up in my lawsuit and protect me, since you permitted me to do this unlawfully against the ADA? And this, I was also wondering, since the ADA was made into, it's a federal law, does the city law or ordinance supersede this federal law about ADA? So if we could get some guidance on these things, I really appreciate it.
So that's more of a public comment? This is on the T-Bid right now?
Yeah, I'm mentioning, I'm commenting on the T-Bid right now. So I, that's why I wanted some guidance on, on these things about, you know, short-term vacation rentals being permitted with the ADA in accordance with the T-Bid, because they pay the T-Bid tax, right? And the TOT tax as well? So I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, if I'll get backed up on these other things that have to do with the same thing, because if I'm, if I'm permitted, I'm paying these taxes, right? So that, can I receive some sort of guidance on this? Will you guys back me up if I get sued for not being ADA compliant?
We, we don't provide any legal guidance.
So how come you guys allowed me, allowed me to, you know, essentially break the law? Can I get an answer on that?
So I think that's something you could set up a meeting with the city manager, and if you would like the mayor to be there, I would be happy to be there. But I think that's something you would have to set up with him, because we would basically refer to our lawyer.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Judy Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. All I want to say about the TOT and the, and the Business Improvement District, I don't think the funds are going where they need to. I think that you should reconsider some other means of collecting revenue other than from the hotel motel and Airbnb owners as far as, as to present the city in the way you'd like to. And I just feel that your funds aren't doing what they need to be doing. And I also think that you should reach out to military families. They are also visitors. They're here because they have to be the military, and their families come and possibly put packets together to welcome the new military people in something in town that would maybe show the military that we have other things for them to do besides look at murals and hike in the park. There are other things that could be done if the city were to get behind it, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, sir, you're voting, you're protest voting, right?
Yes, sir.
What is your VHR?
Yashwin.
What is your VHR number?
I'm sorry?
What is your VHR number?
I don't have, I don't have one.
Oh, so, yeah, so.
It would be the KB Ranch Hotel Bed and Breakfast.
I'm sorry?
But we don't have a VHA number.
She's, she's a bed and breakfast?
Yes.
She's a hotel.
No, it's a bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
And we don't have a VHA number.
No, we got you. But.
Let's make, I want to make sure that that's a protest, that that's.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yashwin, you're protest too, right? Yeah.
So what, what hotel?
The KB Ranch Hotel Bed and Breakfast.
Are you speaking to me or are you speaking to her?
You, sir.
I'm sorry.
Okay, just tell us if you're, if you're protest voting, so we can keep tally, okay?
Yes.
Got it.
Hi, I'm Nadia. My family operates the Holiday Inn Express. We also serve on the T-Bid board as advisor to T-Bid Director. We have given the T-Bid Director an opportunity to attract tourists and marketing, however they have failed. Prior to T-Bid formation, our property operated at just under 69% occupancy, and after T-Bid, we were down to about 67%. We track our clients, and most are repeated clientele. The small percentages of tourists that do come are already intercontinental members. We are tracked by their membership numbers. We want out of T-Bid. I also bring to your attention the following in regards to VHR/ADA compliance. The ADA is meant to ensure that people with disabilities can fully participate in all aspects of life. All types of businesses that serve the public, regardless of their size or the age of their buildings, must follow the American Disability Act. In addition, if you are a business, there are many aspects of the ADA that you should be familiar with. VHR is a business, since they pay our city a business license, the building department inspects prior to issuance of a VHR permit. VHR owners do a mandatory class mandated by the city that educates them on human trafficking. The city collects transient occupancy tax plus T-Bid tax. You do not license single-family rented units, apartments, or collect TOT. So do not conveniently confuse yourself. Thank you.
And are you in opposition?
Yep.
Thank you. Which?
Holiday Inn Express.
Oh, yeah, okay. Got it. I can't read this name. Welks, Walks is his last name?
Walker.
Walker? I'm sorry, I couldn't read the first name.
It's my writing, it's okay. Anya Walker. Hello, my name is Anya Walker. I was planning on emailing this, but I'm here now, so I'll read it. I may sound a bit off topic, but I don't think it makes much sense addressing one issue and avoiding others that are directly related. I reviewed the letter from the city and the 2022-23 Tourism Marketing Plan. I did various online searches relating to tourism and lodging in Twenty-Nine Palms, and I attended the homeless committee meeting a few weeks ago. I've lived in Twenty-Nine Palms for four years, and whereas I am not highly engaged in the city, I do try to pay attention to what's going on. I was not aware of. I was not aware of T-Bid until recent months. Upon review, I noticed that the tourism plan left a lot of unanswered questions. I am unclear as to why lodging is solely contributing to T-Bid. I understand that it was set up that way, but if its primary purpose is to promote tourism in general and therefore, and therefore all business benefits, it would make sense that all business contributes. Otherwise, the primary focus should be switched to lodging. My online searches gave the impression that at least some of the work is contracted out, and I believe that someone in town who understands the area should have been doing the work. A local would possibly not suggest bike lanes or um, list Facebook is one of the best sources, but not utilize it. There is no clear correlation between T-Bid's efforts and a benefit to lodging. The online lodging results show up organically without T-Bid's efforts. Forty percent of T-Bid's budgets is going to payroll and contracting. I just don't see that the small remaining amount that is directed to business growth in general has a significant impact on lodging, since one must also consider that many tourists only stay for the day or stay in other towns. I believe homelessness, long-term housing, tourism challenges to be related. At the recent homeless meeting, various solutions were brought up to address the immediate crisis. There appear to be great resources and plenty of people willing to assist. There was, however, no mention of long-term plans. If we're just in crisis mode, we should assume that we will be overwhelmed at some point. There is too much division as far as tourism and STRs are concerned. If we don't strongly support tourism and business growth that provide employment, we can't be confused about the increase in homelessness. Driving into town on the sixty-two is not a nice sight. Improving the overall condition of roads, properties, signage, buildings, and businesses would benefit residents and tourists. We cannot be surprised or upset that homeowners sell or turn their homes into STRs rather than consider long-term rentals to locals. The appearance of our city is directly related to tourism, and I believe that is where part of our efforts should be focused. I do not support T-Bid in its current form, but can see that a committee that governs tourism with a broader approach would benefit Twenty-Nine Palms. Thank you.
So ma'am, do you have a, ma'am? Do you have a, a VHR number or a hotel?
Yeah, I do.
Can you give it to the city manager?
Um, I'll look it up.
Okay.
Elizabeth? Ma- Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I am here speaking as a concerned citizen and an advocate for individuals with disabilities. Our civil liberties are currently being violated by short-term rental properties. The American with Disabilities Act has been in effect since nineteen ninety, yet people with disabilities and the agencies that represent them still need to push for accommodations to demand the rights we are entitled to under law. Vacation rentals or VHR, which are included in T-Bid, do not meet ADA accessibility. This makes it difficult to access this kind of accommodation. I have a family with two small children. The lure of a short-term rental vacation property is very convenient for a family. It is very unfortunate that it's so difficult for disabled families to access accommodat- accommodations that would otherwise fit their family's needs. With a kitchen, multiple bedrooms, an entertainment center, outdoor space, yet so many short-term rentals lack the facilities required by other businesses to be in compliance with the ADA. I am precluded from using many short-term rental facilities because they are not ADA compliant. They lack certain accommodations, like an accessible kitchen or bathroom. If a shower isn't up to the requirements, I could risk injuring myself. And outdoor spaces that don't have walkways are difficult to access when you have a mobility aid. Sidewalks that are not up to code and portions lacking sidewalks within Twenty-Nine Palms is extremely limiting to a person with disabilities. I'm a person like you, who wants to enjoy life to the fullest. I have a dynamic disability and I'm fortunate to live in a country that protects my rights. I enjoy the attractions of Twenty-Nine Palms, and I love to visit Joshua Tree National Park. However, I will continue to advocate for the accommodations that myself and others with disabilities are entitled to. Thank you very much for hearing me.
And are you in opposition?
I am in opposition.
Do you have a, a VHR?
A VBI. Uh, I do, I do not know the V-HR number.
You do not, you do not own a VHR?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Alene Leslie?
Good evening. Tonight I repeat all I've said regarding T-Bid at the previous council and T-Bid meetings. Also, after meeting with each councilman individually and with a chamber audience of greater than seventy percent against the continuance of T-Bid, I feel all arguments are falling on deaf ears. And I'm disappointed that most of us feel our efforts have been in vain. As some of you know, I have five short-term rentals, that's the highest amount allowed. I purchased Bistro Twenty-Nine. I've obtained a CUP to establish a bar next to that property. In addition to that, I've taken money out of my retirement fund in order to enjoy a life here, which currently I don't feel is enjoyable, because I don't appreciate the lack of transparency or the real attention to detail by people who are, have an interest and are obviously educated on the subject. Thank you.
Sir, you're voting against?
I am, and my V I jump is oh five seven.
Vino.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. T-Bid stands for Tourist Improvement District. KB Ranch Hotel, Homestead Inn, Campbell House, Twenty-Nine Palms Resort do not fall in the Business Improvement District. Sunnyvale Suites, which is now a Section Eight housing, just like Airbnb, cannot be considered for the vote purposes, which leaves us with eleven hotels. Six of us, Rancher Hotel, Nine Pa- uh, Nine Palms Inn, Motel Six, Holiday Inn Express, America's Best Value Inn, and Oasis Inn and Suites. Twenty, uh, fifty-five percent of us combined once out. That leaves us with a critical mass vote. City has also improperly permitted five hundred VHR. That does not meet the ADA law, which was passed by President Bush in nineteen ninety. Has elected officials, you all say, STR do not have to comply with ADA law. You, you heard from stakeholders who are, who are heavily invested in the city, and four of us create a payroll of just under two million dollars with the potential of increasing our payroll to two million seven fifty per annum. You heard from employees who live in our city, working here, that uh, that are forced to work part-time in the tourist, tourist industry and are really struggling to pay the bills. Yet, you vote not to save their jobs, but the T-Bid Director, who does not live in our city. My conversation with Mayor Pro Tem, I was told by Mayor Pro Tem that T-Bid is frank, the city manager's agenda. Since when does our city manager gets an agenda? He's employed by the council, or is the council employed by the city manager? Can somebody please answer me that?
In the city government style that we have here, uh, manager-council style, the council is in charge.
And does the city manager get an agenda?
I can't speculate or answer questions regarding the city manager.
Can the mayor please answer me, or somebody else from the council members answer me?
No, you finished with your comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, pro, is it a protest?
Uh, are you protesting?
Yeah, I protested, I've said six of us.
So, so Mr. Mayor, uh, Motel Six, I think he mentioned in the protest is, is not protesting.
Have you got proof of that?
I do. Keep going, I'll-
Okay. H. Bakta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable Mayor, council members, my name is Hitesh Bakta. I am the authorized representative of the hotels, um, Holiday Inn Express, Oasis Inn, America's Best Value Inn. I'm here to speak in opposition to Agenda Item Number Ten on behalf of the entities. I would like, as a matter of record, bring up uh, what I had, I believe happened in the last hearing, which was a written opposition to this resolution was handed to you, Mr. Mayor. I'm referring to a document that was signed by one, two, three, four, five, six of the hotels. I just wanna be clear that, for the record, we do have that written document as part of this hearing. If not, I have an extra copy that I'll be happy to give. The document I handed to the city manager indicates a written opposition to Agenda Item Number Ten on behalf of the six hotels listed on it. Mr. Mayor, as the highest in duly-elected representatives of the, the city, uh, of Twenty-Nine Palms, you are required to hold the staff, um, and the rest of the members of the community both accountable and responsible in regards to the actions taken within the city. What I'm talking about is, for example, the introduction of this resolution by the city manager referred to it not as a T-Bid assessment resolution, but a TOT tax resolution. He discusses a two-million-plus assessment as an example that was recorded in this evening's hearing. But if you turn your attention to the resolution, the written resolution that was circulated in the city, it refers to in paragraph four simply as a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar potential assessment. So I'm not sure what we are discussing here this evening, but it is consistent with my understanding of why this resolution is not only flawed, but misleading in many serious ways. The same resolution that was circulated in paragraph seven seems to, oh, sorry, in, in paragraph uh, three very specifically states that it would only be a assessment against existing hotel businesses. There is no mention of hotels, and there is no mention of uh, vacation home rentals. Further, in paragraph five, there is a change, but if you look at three, it clearly says this assessment and resolution, if passed as written, would be seriously flawed. Moving on to the issue of the-
That's your time, sir.
I, I would appreciate a little gra- grace here.
Three, three minutes.
You know, I speak on behalf of six businesses. And this is a very serious matter, I understand that.
We get you, sir, and we, those six businesses have protested, we get that.
It's not just a matter of protest, but it's a matter of understanding why they're protesting.
Three minutes.
May I have thirty more seconds if I conclude?
No, sir.
Thirty seconds, sir.
No, sir, I'm being fair to everyone that needs to speak. Thank you.
Well, in passing, I will say, I'm here to try and avoid a lawsuit being brought against the city, but I assure you that this six businesses I represent intend to file a lawsuit against the city council and the members of this particular council.
Thank you, sir.
If they do pass this very flawed and misguided resolution.
I don't have any more green slips?
Good. Good evening, council and gentlemen. I am here to vote in opposition. I do not have any VHRs or short-term rentals, but I'm here on a different, um, from a different perspective I'm speaking. I'm speaking from the perspective of that T-Bid needs to be disbanded because the dollars don't make sense. I'm speaking very frankly. I am going to ask you all a question. Do, do any of you guys know what Box of Kittens is? No? Um, there's a charge for two thousand dollars, a charge for one thousand dollars, and another charge for two thousand dollars. It's on the general checking account from the city. Um, I went and did some research because it didn't, I didn't like uh, talent acquisition fee. Kind of, kinda weird, kinda gets your attention. Um, and that's just one of the many things that I'm investigating uh, as far as the funds that are not being, actually, as far as the funds that are being misappropriated. Um, I went in to look at, to what is Box of Kittens? It is a social media marketing website that we at some point used. It was found on their um, Facebook, and they posted a picture, and there's a picture of them at the Twenty-Nine Palms Inn um, talking about Visit Two-Nine. My main concern with this is that this is not on the budget, and it's coming out of the general checking. Is that my turn? No? Oh. Um, so, number one, like I said, the dollars aren't making sense. And, and uh, before we move further with other things that don't make sense, I really think that you guys should vote against this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more green slips. Bring it back to council for further discussion. Or, and the city manager tally.
Yeah, so I just uh, wanna get uh, Ms. Leslie, I know she, she has multiple uh, VHR, so I just wanna get those tallied. Because I know you've got that one number.
I don't have all five numbers on me right now.
Okay.
I can give you the address of the-
So, because right now we have uh, six, or eighteen-point-eight-two percent protest. So, so with those percentages, it doesn't hit the fifty percent plus one uh, uh, threshold to stop the assessment.
Thank you very much for that, uh, city manager. Uh, I also wanna thank the members of the public for showing up and uh, bringing their concerns to the council. And I wanna be very clear that I, I take these concerns very seriously. Um, and for the public record, you know, I'm for fairness. And I believe that if one industry, if both industries are both being collected uh, from, uh, if they're both being taxed, then they both need to uh, abide by the same rules. And so, um, I'm of the, I'm of the mindset that there's a lot of votes there um, that just, it just doesn't feel right for me. And so, I'm, I'm standing in opposition, and I want that to be very clear. I'm standing in direct opposition of the T-Bid today.
So you, uh, what's the resolution number? I hear you.
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three, twenty-three. Well, obviously, if, if we vote to move forward, um, there's already a plan to um, to help bring the public and the stakeholders and the council together um, to move forward to, in essence, to either change or improve what's been going on. Um, obviously, it's been working in some fashion, because this year has been the first year we've had anybody or had protests to come to the council and really voice their concern the way it's been, so. Um, I don't see if we, if the council votes to move forward, that um, there's nothing wrong with us getting together and trying to make something that you're, some people's perception that it's not working, to make it work, so. So I'll make a motion that the, we adopt Resolution Number Twenty-three, Twenty-three, Confirming the Levy Assessment. So, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number Twenty-three, Twenty-three, Confirming the Levy Assessments.
I'd like to make a motion as well that we kill it today.
So, the alternate motion's got to go first. Or, I'm sorry, the alternate motion's, yes, got to go first.
So, I need a second on either one of them?
Well, no, the alternate's first, so to kill it, meaning deny the resolution.
But you still need a second, right?
Correct.
Before we go, what's the, we, through Danny's resolution, what's the timeframe of product? Like, I don't want to say yes, and then we go into this big meetings, and we all got to bring together, and then we are on for another year, two years, trying to figure this out. I want to, like, if we can't get it right, then...
So, as I envision it, it's kind of working through with some consultants on it. So, a month of October to bring everybody together to have that discussion, which will give, will lay out, you know, the priorities, right? And things that we've talked about from a priority perspective, you know, and I'm just using things as an example, right? We have $350,000 in the budget, so is it events, you know? Is it, is it the digital marketing that we have been doing? You know, the variety of things that we want to kind of get to. What are your priorities from a stakeholder perspective? Once that, you know, gets established, we'll have to, you know, bring that, you know, to, through the process, you know, through the T-Bid Board, then ultimately, the council for the budget amendment, because there's no new money, it's the same money, $350,000. So, that would come back, and once that's approved, it's implemented, right? So, the timeframe, you know, would be before the end of the calendar year, so October. I would say before the end of December it would be in place, so by January first it would be in place. And that's just a rough, you know, kind of timeline.
Sure, Mr. ...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, by your calculations, we got an eighteen percent vote. These are eighteen percent of businesses and stakeholders that have invested in this city. And I want to be very clear, a yes vote today is forcing them into a relationship that they don't want to be into. And there's an alternative that we can do. We can let it die, and we can bring it back with the businesses that actually want to be a part of it. But I'm not going to support letting, forcing businesses into a relationship that they don't want to. It's their money, it's their investment, and it's on the record.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, so we still need a second for the first, for the fir-, I meant the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, so our second. And we need a roll call for killing it.
Councilmember Klink?
No.
Councilmember Mince?
No.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Buildering?
Aye.
Mayor Wright?
No.
So, it's three noes, two yeses.
So, now we do Danny's.
Yeah, that failed, yes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Scott?
Nay.
Councilmember Mince?
Aye.
Councilmember Klink?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Buildering?
Nay.
Mayor Wright?
Nay.
So... One, two, two, three? Three, two. Yes, three yeses.
Yeah, three, two, so, yeah, so the T-Bid doesn't go forward.
Right.
Okay. Not approved.
All right, that's enough. That's enough. And the reason I voted that way is because even though it's eighteen percent, you guys making the most noise, so clearly, you don't want it, so we need to go in a different direction, so, thank you. But I wanted it to come to a vote, not kill it. Okay. Conflict of Interest Code update.
Thank you, Mayor Wright, council members. We bring forth the Conflict of Interest Code, which is a code that establishes who should be, how do I put it? Let me just read this. The Political Reform Act, and in particular, Government Code Sections Eight, Seven, Three Hundred and Eight, Seven, Three Oh Six, require that the city of Twenty-Nine Palms adopt and periodically amend its Conflict of Interest Code. In nineteen ninety-four, the city council adopted Resolution Ninety-four, Sixteen, which enacted by reference the model of Conflict of Interest Code set forth in California Code of Regulations, Title Two, Section One, Eight, Seven, Three Zero, including any amendments as may be duly adopted by the Fair Political Practices Commission. At that time, the city council also designated employees under an appendix of designated positions and formulated disclosure categories under an appendix of disclosure categories. So, staff and city attorney's office have reviewed the current Conflict of Interest Code and have determined that minor revisions are needed to eliminate certain positions and to clarify certain designated positions. Several current designated positions have been eliminated and have been recommended for deletion. Additionally, several positions have changed names. Therefore, staff recommends that the list of designated positions that's in the current staff report be adopted to reflect the current name of decision-making positions. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions. If you'll notice that there's an appendix, and there's a list of those designated positions, and who has to report and who doesn't. The last resolution that we adopted was in twenty-ten, and they asked that you revise and update every two years and even number of years. We have not done so, so we are here to do that today.
Questions for staff? Open to the public, getting green slips. Bring it back.
Make a motion to move the item. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Mince?
Aye.
Councilmember Klink?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Buildering?
Aye.
Mayor Wright?
Aye.
Approved five-oh. Thank you for making that very easy.
Discussing and potential action items, Morongo Valley Arch Navigation Center sponsorship.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a correction to the staff report. It's actually not Morongo Valley, it's Morongo Basin Arch.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That was my error. I very much apologize to Astrid and to Arch. This is a request from Arch to, for the city council to financially sponsor their proposed navigation center, proposed at sixty-five, ninety-four Adobe Road for the amount of thirty-two thousand and ten dollars. This particular project request went before the Housing and Homeless Committee last month, and they voted unanimously in the affirmative to recommend it to the city council that the council sponsor the Arch Navigation Center for a year. And I know that we have members of Arch here tonight, so we are here for questions.
Any questions for staff? Bring it to the public. All right, I got Ms. Astrid.
Thank you very much for considering the navigation center. I know we are going to go visit it on Thursday at ten o'clock and actually look at the facility, and we are hoping that she is going to rent it. It's been a long time that it's been sitting there, and so we'll be able to report back, you know, what is actually happening. The reason we want this navigation center, I know we've talked about it quite a bit, I'll keep it quite brief, is that we need a place for people to go that are, that are maybe having a crisis because of the weather. They may need water. I mean, you've heard the tragedy of the gentleman who died recently, and we're not really sure the cause of his death, but we want to make sure that people have access to water, they have access to temperature, a good temperature, climate place, that if they need food, or they need clothing, or they need services, that this is going to be a place in Twenty-Nine Palms to offer it. We, I really appreciate Twenty-Nine Palms, I've told you this many times. I am so proud of this city. I'm proud of the amount of times that you have connected with us and have supported us through the crises. When we had the snowstorm, when we just went through the storm with Hillary, you have been there for us. Frank, Frank and I have worked together to get the own project together that is for veterans housing. We are finally getting that up and running. And that was, and there isn't, you know, nobody else in this basin did it, it was you. You have done all of this. I'm so proud of you, and I, and when I go to the ICH meetings, I remember what you're doing. So, this is, to me, is another indication of where your heart is, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, yeah, some...
I was just going to ask Astrid.
Astrid? Astrid, got a question.
I was just, I was just wondering if, you haven't met with the landlord yet.
Yes, we've been talking to her.
Oh, so this thirty-two thousand after...
She's well aware of it. She doesn't live here, she lives out of the area, so she's going to come and give us the key and give us the tour.
Oh, okay, so you've already discussed the amount?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Deanna Perez?
Good evening. So, I'm here actually alongside Astrid about the center, and I appreciate it. But I'd like to know what our goals are long-term for, sorry, our homelessness, it's not just the homelessness, it's the mental illness and the addiction behind it. And I feel we somewhat enable the homelessness instead of approaching the actual problem, which is the mental illness and the drug addiction. And we have nothing here in our city to facilitate anybody that is wanting to get clean and straighten their lives up. And I was just wondering what the steps to go about getting something for that as well.
Sure, I can, I can answer that. It's, it's part of my goal as we expand this navigation center and this drop-in center to be an access point for those type of services. And so, partnering with Morongo Basin Arch, you know, I'd love to see some of these organizations from maybe down the hill that have expertise in mental health and those things to come to this access center and help to, help with the rehabilitation of our unhoused population. Long-term goal is obviously stable housing and getting people off of the street with transitional housing, and then moving forward with, you know, apartments, and then, you know, eventually, homeownership at the end, if possible. Not everyone's going to own a home, but, you know, as many people as possible is my goal.
Also, Set Free is opening a ranch. It's a discipleship program, but they deal in addiction and things like that. So, we're looking to that organization as well. So, we're looking to different organizations to assist Arch.
Thank you.
Yes. Jean? Or Jen DeFalco? I had it all messed up, Ben.
It's all good. So, I just wanted to, Jen DeFalco. I just wanted to express how vital getting some type of navigation place here in Twenty-Nine is. We have a lot of homeless, and I appreciate all the help, like from Shadow Mountain, from Set Free, from Nick, you know, but it's going to take all of us together to try to resolve some of these issues. You know, I'm not going to emphasize on what Astrid said about the person that died, except that his name was Tony, and he was a good person and a friend of mine. And maybe if we had a navigation center, he wouldn't have been on the mattress, and he would have been inside, you know? I don't know. But I do know that there are homeless on the streets that have medical illnesses and diseases like diabetes, and they need some type of relief to come inside, get water, even if it's just to sit somewhere. So, if you guys can't approve our navigation center, approve someone's and get them off the street. Get them the services that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, y'all know about that clapping stuff. Alex? Alex Garcia? Oh, okay.
How's it going, guys? My name's Alex Garcia. I am the, one of the city planning commissioners, was also on the Homeless and Housing Commission. This plan, there's navigation center, I think, is probably one of the most important things we can get right now for the homeless. The Astrid and Jen DeFalco have done amazing things in our, in other communities around, along the Morongo Basin. I'm in full support of this, and I really do hope that you guys put this into consideration because we're a small town, we're a community. Our homeless issue shouldn't be as much of an issue as it is now because we can't all work together and make this at least a little bit better, people's lives a little bit better. Just what I think, but anyways, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Is it, is it for this item, Mayor?
Is it for this item that we're talking about?
I've kind of got that, I think you guys have a homeless issue?
Yes.
All right. So, yeah, come on.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maymaw Bellamy. I've been here for about a year or so, but recently, I helped out two homeless women. One is, like everyone's saying, one of them, she has a really bad mental health issue. Just yesterday, I took her to, like, different organizations, but they weren't really able to help her out because of her mental health issues. This makes me emotional, so, excuse me. I'll be back.
So, you're in favor for this center? Okay, and you checked public comment? Okay, I guess not. All right. All right, no more green slips. Bring it back, looking for a motion.
I move, Mayor, that we go ahead and sponsor the proposed navigation center located at six-five-nine-four Adobe Road for the amount of thirty-two thousand and ten dollars a year.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Mince?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Klink?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Buildering?
Aye.
Mayor Wright?
Aye.
Approved five-oh.
All right. Self-help construction program.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item in front of you this evening is to approve the agreement to negotiate with Coachella Valley Housing Coalition to establish a self-help construction program in the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. Just by way of a little background, the policy of the council is to create housing, to create some affordable housing. We have some representatives here this evening from Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. And this program, they did a presentation to you, I don't know, a month or two ago, I think, that looked at an opportunity that we could enhance homeownership within our community. The first step in that process is to get this agreement in place so we could start working towards some common goals to release the program. Some of the things that we need to work through, things like location, price points, marketing, the areas that we're looking to attract, you know, within Twenty-Nine Palms or others, and probably other things that, find details that we need to work through. So, with that, we again do have representatives with Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, or if the council had some questions for them, but they are here to answer if there are any questions.
And they've been patiently waiting, so. Any questions for them?
I do have a question, a couple. I'm under the understanding that you're going to do ten at a time, and they have to be going at once?
Come on up to the, yeah, thank you.
And is this just for Twenty-Nine Palms residents, or are you going to bring others from maybe Yucca that want to build a house here, you know, help build a house, or Coachella Valley, or Coachella Valley?
My name is Pedro Rodriguez, I'm the executive director for the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. The mutual self-help program works because it's a community, you know, we get groups of ten to twelve, and they work together to build their house, and then they don't move in until everybody's done with their house. So, it's groups of ten. We would like to have contiguous lots, because that helps, you know, during the construction, it makes it easier. Because the city is, working with the city, and then... Because the city is, you're working with the city and, and, you know, that you're providing the land, you can specify they have to be Twenty-Nine Palm residents. That could be a restriction that you can set.
All right.
And I'm happy to announce that we just got a two-year grant from the USD eight to promote this program from twenty-four to twenty-six. So we have funds available to provide the technical assistance that we need to, to provide this program here.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I just wanna add, we had, you know, I just wanted to add that, um, in this, in the city of Twenty-Nine Palms, you know, our homeownership is extremely low, lower than the average. We're at forty percent homeownership in this co, in this, in this city. Whereas in other cities, where it's around sixty percent. Um, we're in a housing crisis and, and we can definitely use every avenue or tool at our disposal. And so I'm happy to work with the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, and thank you for driving up here today.
Thank you, thank you.
So you, you guys gonna rent a house? Like, y'all build a house?
Uh, no.
I was just checking.
You're only an hour away, so a construction supervisor will come out in.
Oh, all right, okay, got it. Thank you. All right, open it to the public. No green slips. Bring it back. Oh, sorry. You can come on up and then, yes, fill out a green slip.
Hi, I'm Joe Candelaria. Uh, this seems awesome. I'm really excited to learn more about it. Yeah, I just, this is really exciting to see that the city's looking at, like, how we make the community whole, so. Kudos, that's about it.
Uh, thank you. Okay, bring it back.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, uh, for the city council to approve the agreement, uh, to negotiate with Coachella Valley Housing Coalition to establish self-help construction program in the city of Twenty-Nine Palms.
Second.
Roll call. Oh, Steve.
Councilmember Klink?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Bildery? Mayor Wright?
Aye.
Approved fave.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. I just gonna do it, huh, all night long? Ms. Alice Lawson? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I did this out of order. Let me read this first. "This is the time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There is a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out name and address slips and get them to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items were deferred until those considerations of the items on the agenda." Okay, Ms. Alice? Yes, ma'am, we ready. Uh, thank you.
I'm here to talk about the safety of the children walking to school along Hillside, El Paso. There's no stop, there's only a two-way stop on Sun Valley and, uh, Sunnyvale, and cars go so fast down my street. And they go around the corner on a Sunnyvale, and there's only, there's only a two-way stop, it's not a four-way stop, it doesn't slow these cars down. Three years ago, a little girl walked out in front of my car when I was going home, and I could've hit her. I turned around and talked to her about it. You know, she asked, she says, "Where's the crosswalks?" We have no crosswalks for these children. We have no people to slow down. It's a straight shot, and there's only two speed limit signs on that street, one between Hillside and my, and, and down by Sunnyvale. I've had two people down there who have got their cars, my daughter's truck got damaged by someone driving so fast, they bent the frame. And somebody else got their car parked in front of their house and got smashed by somebody going around Sunnyvale on the Sun Valley and smashed her car. What if these are one of our children? You know, great, the car, the sidewalks are coming in on El Paso, but we need stop signs. When they change the stop signs, old, they, I asked them, are we gonna get the four-way stop? They said, no. These children need to be taken into consideration. They're coming out of the Twenty-Nine Palms apartments. There's all kinds of apartments over on El Paso. Oh, Sunnyvale rather, I'm sorry. And, uh, I wish somebody would take them into consideration before they become a... I have grandchildren that were moved away from here because of that. And I wish they would take these children into consideration.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Eileen Leslie?
Okay. Dear mayor, tonight I address freedom of speech and the chilling effect to that constitutional right as a result of bad behavior. I'm here accompanied by an escort. Yes, me, a person who has no fear in my life until September sixth at the wastewater meeting, where I was threatened from the dais by the chairperson. She screamed at me from the dais that it was not time for me to speak and stated, in quotes, "Wait till I go outside, we can talk all day, Eileen," end quote. Please be clear, I have never met this woman, and due to her bad behavior and screaming, she is not someone I wanna be associated with in any way. That was furthered by the chairperson's husband's arrival. He wildly threw open both doors to the council chamber. For your information, he has since boasted about it on social media after a post-commenter suggested to the chair, chairperson, quote, "Use the deputies to clear the disruptors." I quote her husband, referring to the use of deputies, quote, "That's my job. I showed up last night, and I'm sure everyone knew exactly why, when I flung, flung open the doors." He achieved his goal with that inti- intimidation tactic. As I became very scared of the chairperson and her husband. At that time, I was the only woman citizen in the audience. My fear was further magnified by the lack of intervention by our city manager. He allowed the escalation of a hostile environment. At the conclusion of the meeting, I immediately moved to sit next to the videographer in order to avoid any more trauma to myself. That didn't work. The chairperson walked directly to me and asked, quote, "Do you wanna say anything outside?" end quote. I literally stayed in my house confused and scared until this Monday. I went to the sheriff's department, and after the sergeant watched the video and heard the audio tape, he suggested I go next door to the courthouse. Why would this have a chilling effect to our community? Because why would any citizen show up at any meeting to be chastised and bullied? This is a very, very bad look for our city. I have learned that some potential investors watched the meeting on YouTube, and they were appalled by this uncivil behavior. And as a result, may not invest in this city. Since this incident, I have asked myself over and over again, why am I here? The stars, the sunset, and the National Park? Those are the things that drew me here initially. I'm staying because in my presence, no one will be bullied. That is the most despicable behavior. I will demonstrate to everyone that fear can be overcome, that we should all attend city meetings and speak our minds and demand just transparency from our city officials. I would like to add a thank you note to each of my fellow concerned citizens for their support of me. I've read all your messages. Thank you.
Thank you. April Ramirez?
I, um, misspoke earlier, and I alluded to the fact that it was eight thousand two hundred dollars that we spent on Box of Kittens from the city's general fund, and it's actually seventeen thousand six hundred dollars. Please stand by for a cure and correct letter. Thank you.
Ms. Deanna Perez? You, you have public comments? Okay. Um, Mr. Joseph?
Good afternoon and evening, council. It's good to see you guys again. My question is, is the council in charge? Councilman Scott earlier said that you were. But two months ago, our councilman put forth a motion to have the city study what it would take to move the sewage plant east of town to an area that was industrial zoned. Not a vote on whether to move it, just a vote on whether to study it. That was two months and three council meetings ago. Now, I know that Frank will say that this was decided at the last wastewater meeting, but they are not our elected representatives. At that meeting, our concerns were cussishly dismissed. It's too expensive, they'll say. Well, we want to know how expensive, so we can make an informed decision as voters. At an earlier planning meeting, we were told that at the next one, a representative from NV five would be there to tell us how much it would cost. And I went door to door and packed that meeting standing room only, but we were deceived and no new info was given. Now, this, uh, now this month, our councilman is being shadow banned. Why are you afraid of this? Three coun, three council meetings, and his motion has not been, uh, brought to the agenda yet. Why are you afraid of him? Is this kind of behavior, this is the kind of behavior that is used to keep people away from these meetings. We, we are no longer accepting this runaround from our city government. Frank, I like you, but you cannot stand in the way of our democratic process. And while we're on the subject, and speaking of YouTube videos, I would like to remind everyone that the last wastewater planning meeting is available online. You will not hear anyone call the racial slur, which has been alleged. I'll pay fifty dollars out of my own pocket if you can find this anywhere in the video. What you will hear is myself and Eileen Leslie being threatened. The last time someone asked me if I wanted to step outside, it was a decade ago in Danny's bar from some drunk guy. And Danny, you know that I am not someone who is easily baited by that kind of bad behavior. But I'm also not about to stand for it from an unelected official in this council chamber. This unelected official's husband threw open the doors in an effort he later admitted online was to intimidate us. Well, we are not intimidated by someone acts like this, by someone who acts like this, they think they own this room. They do not own this room. We, the citizens of Twenty-Nine Palms, own this room, and we will not be intimidated. Thank you. Uh, one last thing. My neighbor Pam emailed the mayor and the city clerk tonight, and you were supposed to read her email to this, uh, meeting that would've said about the same thing, because she watched that video and was just as upset. So, uh, I would really appreciate if someone would find that email. It was sent to the clerk and to the mayor, and you could read that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll look, but I don't remember seeing anything.
Well, it was just about the same thing, so just imagine that you got an email and read it, and it said all the same stuff that you said.
All right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Mai? Yes, and Ms. Perez, all right.
All right, excuse me for earlier. I think I'm better now. Um, so recently, you know, I, I was, as I was saying, I helped out two homeless women. Um, I feel that it could be preventable. Um, one of them, she needs more help, but the other, she's just trying to get her life back together. And the city of Twenty-Nine Palms has got to look at the bigger picture. Do you have your citizens back? Sometimes we'll all fall down. And if there's a shelter, you know, for them to recover, you know, no one just gets into drug, like, something bad happens to them, you know? So we've gotta look at other people's story and perspective, and I think the shelter will be really, uh, beneficial to the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. Because if you can help your citizen get back on their feet, they're gonna give back to the city. So you just gotta look at the bigger picture like that. So, yeah. That's it.
All right, so, um, just so you know, ma'am, uh, you missed it, but we voted unanimously yes for the shelter. Okay, future council-initiated items. Oh, I'm sorry, no more pub, no more slips, right, yeah, okay. Frank, um, what do we have to do for, um, uh, Loria and Sunny Slope? Because I watched some kids try to cross the road from the high school.
Okay?
And they was having a really difficult time.
Well, we, we'd have to, um, you know, you have to study that to add, you know, if you're looking at a, a, a crosswalk, um, you know, that, that would be the functionality. Crosswalks are dangerous in themselves.
Yeah.
Because it's not a, it's not a force field, um, you know, but, uh, we could study that to see if, you know, that can.
Can we study it to see if maybe like a stop sign or something too, or light?
Yeah, so you have to have a, you have to hire, hire a, a traffic engineer. Traffic engineer is gonna study the patterns. So we, you know, did, you know, through that, uh, signalized and unsignalized, uh, study that we recently did with all the intersections within the city. And, and that never came up, you know, within that analysis, but we can look at that again.
Well, yeah, 'cause when did we do it? Was school in?
Um, yeah, it was a couple of years ago. I don't know what time of year that it was then, but it was done a couple of years ago. So I could find out what time.
Yeah, see if we can do it while school is in.
Okay.
I'll second that, and also, um, the, um, stop and go lights and all the other lights that are blinking off and on. I think that's a great idea to have in the city as well.
Talking about that specific location?
Sure. Yeah, that's right in the middle of Loria. You're gonna have to see something there to stop them. It's not gonna be just, uh, you know, the, the lights that are flashing, blinking lights? Right?
Yeah.
Especially on that one.
Yeah. It's, it's too late. It's too late, sorry.
Tell us after.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I'd like to make a future initiated item to disband the wastewater committee. I don't think it's in the best, um, it's not doing the, the public any service, and it's actually an embarrassment at this moment. I'd like to make another future initiated item to replace the chair of the wastewater committee.
How long are we gonna have the wastewater treat, uh?
That was one, you know, question that was asked last meeting. So there's two things, right? There's, uh, one is through construction, it's probably good to have, to have that vetting, 'cause through construction, there's gonna be disruption, right? If we don't move forward with the project, um, then it would be up to the council if you wanna continue that, uh, committee to vet, you know, possible, um, you know, scenarios, 'cause then there would be no money, you know, kinda moving forward with it. So it would totally be a long-term process. So there'd be nothing imminent. So you could disband it at that time, or you could keep it and have them keep talking about it. Maybe, maybe quarterly, or twice a year, or some lesser timeframe. But, yeah, definitely, you know, to the direction of the council.
At this point, there's a future initiated item to move the wastewater treatment plant. Um, it's on, it's on the agenda. I don't think it's relevant to have the wastewater committee anymore. We need to move forward. I'd like to make a future initiated item to actually stop the sewer treatment, uh, altogether.
Well, all three of those died.
Not a laughing matter, though, but hey.
I will, I, we do, we need, we do, seriously, we need to discuss what happened that night. I mean, that's the bottom line, that needs, that was not fair what happened, that's, should not have happened. So we, that discussion needs the, that has to happen, so.
Yeah, so one of the things, um, in response to some council comments, we are having some training, um, with each of the chairs. I don't know if that is sufficient, you know, for the, for the, uh, council, but, uh, I mean, we could have other policy-related discussions.
So I, I do think that it needs to be discussed, um, about. It definitely needs to be discussed, and I don't wanna just make it be, um, possible removal, but it needs to be. It definitely needs to be discussed and I don't wanna just make it be, um, possible removal, but it needs to be discussed.
In the, in the training session?
No.
No, the incident that, that occurred.
Okay, so you wanna bring it forward to a future agenda item?
Publicize all this, I mean, I just, I think.
Well, it's already public.
I know, but we got.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I just want us to keep people's, the individuals involved, have a conversation with them, not public, but needs to be addressed automatically, apologies to be done, corrections need to be made, for this doesn't happen again, I mean, we gotta do lessons learned from this, you know, we're not all perfect.
So what, what if, what if the answer is replacing the chair?
Then it's replaced, I mean, you know.
But we would have to make that decision, right?
Yeah, so, um, again, you can't get into a lot of dialogue, so it'd have to be a future meeting to have that discussion?
Does it have to be a city council future meeting?
Yeah, it can't be a closed session, I know that was one of the questions.
It has to be.
Can you, can you and the mayor, the mayor pro tem, sit down with, um, the individuals?
Yep. Yeah, then we can get this resolved, so we can come back with removal, disband, everything in the.
In that discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just to be fair to everyone, I just, that's all it was, not just quick drop the gallows type stuff, let's, let's do this right, let's learn from this too, we can, all lessons learned, we can learn. That's all I got.
Alright. City manager update.
Okay, I'll be fast. So the, uh, just so the council's aware, we continue from a staff perspective to, to look at the pool as it relates to try to figure out how to keep it open longer. We're working with Premier Pools, but, uh, they, they were not, you know, able to, um, you know, give us a proposal. So we were hoping to have a proposal from them that just kinda didn't materialize. So we will continue to work with them and, um, and, and staff to hopefully have something proposed to the council. You know, it's nice, it'll be nice tomorrow, I know those of you are Rotarians, so, um, uh, and those council members who are not Rotarians, if you want to be my guest tomorrow. So the Regional Water Quality Control Board will be at Rotary tomorrow to give a little presentation, so it'd be nice to hear from them, um, on, on their activities within the city. I'm also, uh, working, continue to work on a statewide committee on sales tax allocations. Um, it's becoming a bigger, bigger issue as we drive, you know, anywhere you drive on a freeway, seeing a warehouse being popped up. Uh, those warehouses are now, if it's a fulfillment center, taking all the sales tax, you know, more and more, um, we all are, you know, buying from Amazon and other things and the sales tax goes to those areas, so there, um, is a big discussion in the state, it's not fair, because our residents buy the stuff. Uh, however, the sales tax currently is going to those fulfillment centers, so working on that, hopefully, um, have a solution to that, that, that makes it through the legislature. Showers, you know, the last meeting, the council did, uh, approve that, staff is gonna be working on an agreement. Again, very similar to tonight, you gave the policy direction to have the navigation center, next is doing an agreement. Uh, so we'll be, we're working with that with Shadow Mountain on the showers, then also from there we'll do with, uh, uh, with Morongo Basin Arch. Then finally, um, just want to kinda, um, let the council know as it relates to IT. IT is becoming, you know, I've been now, you know, a finance professional, um, for thirty years and, uh, IT is probably the one thing that has gone hyperspeed with, uh, cyber intrusions to protection and I know from the council's perspective, from the staff's perspective, it's tough to operate. And I just, uh, wanna say, you know, we're, uh, just really appreciative of Eli Marshall and the things that he does. It's, it's a complex world now, uh, unfortunately, and, uh, and it's costly too, you know, it's, uh, the federal government is putting more restrictions on us to protect ourselves, granted, uh, but it's very costly, so, anyway, uh, that concludes, uh, my comments.
Um, I, I did forget one thing, um, I went to the football game at the high school and, um, I thought it was really interesting that they had a kid walk out with the flag for the national anthem and I know that the Rotary is looking at doing something, but, um, is Abigail still here? No? Maybe like if she could find us some money so we could see, I don't even know how much it costs to do a flagpole, but I think that's something that the city should be able to do for the high school.
One of your colleagues is the Rotary president and I think Rotary's working on it too, right, so.
But don't we have a flagpole sitting at the, this building that's not being used?
Oh, you have to donate it, yeah, there's actually three of them, so I don't, you know, you know, so I'll, I'll reach out to the school district to see.
Yeah, I mean, they, whenever they go somewhere, they're the Twenty-Nine Palms Wildcats, so they represent the city. I mean, I understand that it's the Morongo Unified School District, but it's still our high school. And so if the city can, I mean, at least do that, I think it would be great, so.
I, I'll, I'll reach out to them and find out their status.
Okay. Well, I'm pretty sure they don't have the money. So we, we need to come up with the money. I, like I said, I don't know how much that costs, but if we could find out, so, thank you. Alright, everybody good? Okay, so we're gonna adjourn this meeting in memory of September eleventh, two thousand one.
Was it, you stick to these meetings all, all day?
I do.
Yeah. Good education, I guess.
It is, it's interesting for me, and then, since I come here regularly, I have a voice to talk to people, and you know, it's like my new days. I was gonna mention, uh, to the mayor, truth to you, tonight is always interested in helping out things like that.